Welcome everyone to our school committee meeting, February 25.
Can you hear us? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? No. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Mr. Wierich, anything?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to move up item 6B, preliminary facility study.
Second.
All of us in favor? Thank you.
You have the preliminary facility study that was performed by RGB. Dave DeQuatro and Cindy Gerlach, the two folks we've been working with, are here to just kind of give a brief overview of the preliminary study, and it is preliminary, and to answer any questions you may have afterwards. Cindy, Dave, you want to?
Hi, everyone.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you for having us. Last time we talked about that our tasks were to look at cooling options for the three elementary schools and help with the ride process. So what we've done since then has gone through all of the buildings. And with me tonight, besides David DeQuatro, I have Mark Plant, who is a principal with Building Engineering Resources, and they were the engineers that helped with the cooling study and providing the due diligence report. So we thought if there was any questions tonight related to mechanical or electrical, Mark could help us with those questions. As an overview, obviously with the three new elementary schools, there's very minor repairs in those three schools. For them, can you hear me okay? I don't know that this is...
Yeah, you might want to turn that microphone off a little bit.
See if that works. Does that make a difference?
I think you're going to have to project a little.
I'll just talk louder. I'll talk louder.
Unfortunately, our microphones seem to be more for the listening public at home rather than the people in the room, but...
Well, so then for the two, the middle school and the high school, being that both those buildings are over 40 years old, as you can expect, there are several items of work that we are recommending that need to be done within one to five years. And the way we set the report up is, we set it up as in regards to priorities, in regards to health and safety code and high maintenance issues. What we identified with costs are those priorities between one and two, so it's between one and five years. The costs are significant for those two schools, and I do want to say that the costs, those are bare-bones items. It's not aesthetics. It's, you know, those buildings are have, they're robust, they're good buildings, they're good structures, but they're tired. And the items that we are recommending for work are systems. It's mechanical systems, new rooftop. Although we say that the ceiling tiles are sagging or they're dingy, they're not included in those costs. These are what we consider as priority, major issues that need repair. In regards to the cooling study, we did meet with Bill and Doug last week just to go over their preliminary report. It was suggested that perhaps you would want information in regards to cooling for both the high school and the middle school. We did look at that. There is enough power in both schools to provide that. The costs are significant. We'll put it into the next study, but in each case, it's over $2 million just to provide the cooling in that option three. It's very similar in the sense that there, you can either do the ceiling fans, or because it's the unit ventilators, it's the option three. And so then the costs are significant.
So would that be $2 million for each of the, each school?
Yes.
$2 million for option three, though?
Yes, and what it is...
So if you went with option one, it would be...
Option one for the middle school is approximately $160,000.
Okay. And is that just ceiling fans?
That is just the ceiling.
I did notice in the walkthrough in Fort Barton that the second floor classrooms had a type of linen-like shade that seemed to let the light in, but perhaps not...
Light filtering, yes.
Would you include something like that for the high school's second floor?
We can.
Or sort of west-facing windows? Is that something that you feel is effective?
It is effective. It does help. I, you know, I'd have to look at that to see what they have. If they have window treatments right now, we can look at that to see what's there. Light filtering is always nice because you can always see outside, but it prevents a lot of the sun glare from coming in.
And the heat gain?
Yeah.
Low-tech, low-cost.
Yes, exactly.
Would be, you know, our first choice.
Yes. So, big picture, those are the items for our next steps. Personally, this is a draft. We still want to meet with the custodians because what we see is maybe different than the piece, parts and pieces they're replacing constantly. We don't have that kind of information, and we certainly would want to make sure that we capture that kind of information in the report. And also, we want to meet with the local fire marshal to go over the code deficiencies, to see what would be agreeable for fixes. And myself and the electrical engineer want to go back to the middle school just for a few more lookarounds.
So when do we anticipate sort of a final?
We could provide a final assessment within probably one week. I just need to make sure that we can get those appointments with the fire marshal and the custodian.
I mean, I don't know, is there going to be anything, I'm just thinking as far as planning, is there going to be anything, Superintendent Wierich, that we're going to be trying to work in this budget session? Or is this going to be sort of a workshop that we focus on longer term?
I would recommend that we follow what we've been told, you know, how Ride wants to process, to have, to form the building committee.
Mm-hmm.
And then meet with them and look at these items that comes out of the final report. And then say, okay, here's what we want, this is what we identify as being important. And then meet, and then everyone agrees, consensus, then we go to the budget committee. And even though the budget will be already done for '14, '15, we have to explain to them what we're doing, what our recommendations are, because in the prices, as you see, there are some small things we can just knock off that we can do without a building committee. But for the most part, a lot of these are big-ticket items that we're going to need to strategize, the best way to finance them over a period of time.
And I only say that because I think you have a little bit, you have a little bit more time than, yeah, that I don't think we're looking to have the final report in a week because we are going to have, this is going to be a longer term.
Because from a budget standpoint, we're pretty much accounted for, for '14, '15.
Yeah, so I just don't want to put time pressure on you if you felt like you needed more time to meet with those individuals.
All right, good. In regards to the Ride application, I think it's first all, everyone deciding, like Bill said, what the scope of work will be, and, you know, in regards to a bond referendum and whatnot. And David can talk about that process further. Is there any specific questions that you have in regards to the findings so far?
Well, thank you. It was very well written and easy to go and understand, you know.
There will be a difference regardless of the windows that we talked about, that we got to talk to the fire department about.
Right.
It talks about cost to be estimated. That's something that Cindy needs to meet with our fire marshals on because of code issues. They've got to meet a certain requirement.
Right, there's a few items like that. One is the areas, or the window for rescue. And then another one is the dead ends in both schools. There's two dead ends in each, so there will be some cost implications. They just need to understand what will be agreeable.
And while it's a sizable, that preliminary amount is sizable, quite frankly, it's a lot less than what I thought it was going to be. So I was told that to both Cindy and David, and that it's a lot of money, but it's still less than, you know, what I thought it would be. But also keep in mind, as Cindy opened with, this is just for function, functionality. There's, you know, the tired ceilings, the wooden, you know, the wood frames at the high school and the middle school, all that. It's not being addressed, and that's not what we're addressing. With the study, that wasn't the goal of the study. It was to provide the data that you see before you.
So, yeah, I think this is a great first pass. I think we kind of need to separate it into two, though, for, I think, the longer-term reimbursement piece, how we're going to do it, setting priorities is sort of the longer-term piece, but I think we promised sort of a shorter-term discussion of the elementary, specifically for the Fort Barton parents. So we'll have to address that, I think, at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah, you can call that out separately.
So we'll call that out.
Because it is separated, you know, in the way it's presented.
Yeah, that may be something we can address in the short term.
I think so.
Right, but keep in mind...
That's not going to be the permanent solution to that.
And that probably wouldn't be reimbursable anyway.
Right.
Because it's not a safe, a health and safety issue. It's more cosmetic, for lack of a better description, something that we want. It's a want as opposed to a need. So that is certainly something we can address in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, so for, I guess for this, you have a little bit more time, you know, you know, take your time, meet with who you need to. We'll get a final draft or a final product for this. But as far as the shorter-term addressing, the promise we made to the Fort Barton parents, we should probably have that on...
We certainly can do that within the next meeting or two.
Meeting or two, because May will be right around the corner.
Because you want to make a decision and then you want to bid it.
Yes.
Because that takes a while.
Well, or they may need to go out and get more information for what they, you know, for their, what they promised too. So let's have that on in the next meeting or two.
Sure.
Okay.
And we'll work on the general assembly to lift the moratorium. That would be good.
Right, come June, correct?
That's a goal.
Yeah, that would be good for all schools.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's such a long day.
Do you have any other questions for either Cindy or Dave?
Is there any, you know, I know we had a very specific objective with this study. Certainly that's, I think, something that's possibly doable in the next five years, but is there any role for looking at a even longer-term sort of issues that we need to address? Aesthetics sort of is the right word I'm looking for, something that will make it a 21st century school as opposed to a school that was built in the 20th century and, you know, sort of close to the middle of the 20th century.
There are certainly more things that you can do. I mean, it's a start by providing better lighting. That is in here as a number three priority. It's obviously not a one or two, but you, better lighting is just better quality lighting. It'll be better overall lit. You'll have, you'll save money using LEDs. You'll be, you'll be energy efficient. Your exterior windows, they're not efficient. There's lots of things like that. And then, of course, technologies have to do with all of your data, which is not something that we look at in our report.
I think that would be, to answer the question, I think it's something that the building committee and the school committee, that would evolve out of the initial discussions and then say, okay, here we are within the next, some of these have to be done within two or three years, five tops. Some aren't going to be reimbursed no matter what. So like as Deb said, we've got to sit as a group, we've formed the committee, and then say prioritize and categorize everything, and then have those conversations, you know, as they evolve.
I mean, there's, yeah.
Where do we want to be seven, 10 years from now? Because we're really looking at, and what, and we talked about this in our meeting on Thursday, approximately, if we implemented the majority of these recommendations, how much, how many more years approximately would we get out of the buildings? How would that extend the use, the life of the buildings?
Right, so in regards to warranties, for instance, like a roofing warranty, it's typically 20 years on a single ply roof, although with preventative maintenance, everybody extends their roof. And it would be similar to your mechanical systems and things like that. So you are, you know, you are extending the life of your systems. Your building is, the building structure itself is constant maintenance. The building can be here for a very long time. It's what you do with it. And there's lots of ways of improving. It's what you are looking to do.
Well, and I think, Dr. Larkin, it's like we have so many structural issues just to protect the asset, that the aesthetics is so far down the road because we have the things that, I mean, that are going to be millions just to make sure we're protecting the asset, roofs, you know, parking lots that are, you know...
The lighting, and again, the lighting, we have already done the study.
Yeah.
And we put it on hold, waiting for this report, which confirms what we already knew. So we have a price there, and I'm sure, I believe, we're going to get a price in the final report as well. So, I mean, a lot of the study confirmed what we already knew and put a price tag on it for us, which was just good.
But, you know, it would be nice to have a building committee sort of put a 10-year plan out so that, you know, you know where you're going, and every year you're referring to it.
Things as the windows, obviously, are probably something in the three to five year.
Yeah, and I want to say, personally, I would not say those are aesthetics when it comes to lighting or making your building envelope more energy efficient.
I think it's because we lack the knowledge, the terminology.
Well, no, I mean, to me, aesthetics would be paint, which is a low cost. For instance, the middle school corridors are so dark, and those are easy fixes. And then every other light is on, which just emphasizes the darkness.
That's been 20 years to say. I think that started back in the first energy crisis in '73, way back when. Now, you guys remember that? Am I the only one that remembers that?
And every other light is on.
Okay, I know I'm old.
I think every improvement that you make, you're making, you're extending the life of the building, but also you're making smart choices, so you are bringing it to the next step, next level. You're going to be getting energy assistant, energy-efficient systems, so you'll be saving money and you'll be smart, and everything's becoming more sustainable. And you go LED, light fixtures last for 20 years before you have to change them. There's so many smart things like that out there that, everything that you do to improve it will be towards that, making it a modern, more contemporary building. I mean, it's an existing building. You have to work with what you have right now.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience who has questions or comments? Or do you have a comment?
I just wanted to just to touch on a couple of things. First of all, when you're talking about ceiling fans, ceiling fans do turn air, but on a hot, humid day, I know it's very hard for people to remember that, what hot, humid is right now, but it does come back. And the ceiling fans will just generate more hot, humid air around the area. So that's, certainly it moves the air, but it doesn't condition the air. So if you're looking for a conditioned air, you need to incorporate some of that conditioned air, some of the cost of that. I also want to talk a little bit about trending, and we're working with seven other school systems right now. So a lot of school systems are going through the same thing you are, where it's not a quality and quantity of space, more quality versus quantity. So populations are shrinking right now, and you're trying to stabilize the building and the assets you have. So a building like this that we're in now is a good building, good structure building. So when Cindy's talking about some of the aesthetics, she can mean all the materials. So a lot of what's going on in other towns and cities, they're facing the same economic challenges that Tiverton is, and they're looking at their existing buildings to replenish those buildings versus taking them down and putting up new buildings. A lot of these buildings are really well-built, you know, they're circa mid-'60s and '70s, where they were built well, and the construction technology hasn't changed that much in 40 years, like it did, say, in the '40s. So there's good buildings, there's a good asset that the town should look at. And when you remobilize or redo the building, Cindy talked about windows and lights and ceilings and soffits, all that stuff will make the space brand-new for limited cost. So if you do go out for a bond referendum, there's bond campaigns, there's, everyone probably, I don't know how many of you guys have gone around for the elementary schools that existed here a few years ago, have been through that. So it's quite extensive, and you have timeframes of how you have to get that information over to your legislature in certain timeframes. So I just wanted to bring that out, if anyone had any questions on that as well. Again, we have Mark Plant, who's a resident of Tiverton with us. He's also an electrical engineer, but he represents the mechanical, electrical asset. So if anyone had any questions from him, he's available as well.
Now, would you guys be available when you give us the final one as well?
Of course.
Okay. Thanks, Dave. Okay, Cindy.
Thank you.
Yes, going back to whole business, the Park field test. I sent an email out today, I received from Mary Ann Snyder. Mary Ann said she couldn't make it due to her previous engagement, and in her place, we have the Assistant or Deputy Commissioner of Education, Dave Abbott, here, along with Phyllis Lynch from Rock, to fill in for Mary Ann tonight. We've invited, we asked Mary Ann and now Dave and Phyllis to come and speak to you about the Park field test and the rationale for wanting to participate in it. So I'll turn it over to you folks.
So I have a one-page report from Park. If I could just stand it down. Sure. Okay.
So though, for those of you who don't know, Phyllis is our Director of our Office of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, and the Mary Ann Snyder that Bill is referencing is the Chief of the Division that that office is in. But the assessments are really Phyllis's data, so, as a student, there's no one that knows more about assessments in the state than Dr. Phyllis Lynch, I should say.
So, now some of you are all reading. But that actually gives, no, that's okay. That's why I gave it to you. But that gives you an overview. I know you have probably had a good amount of information, but it gives you an overview of the larger picture of the Park field test in terms of all of the states. And I think the participation, now, one of the questions you had around participation is, you know, what are the benefits for Tiverton in particular participating? And certainly, as going through the Park test for the first time, there are going to be differences in terms of almost just about everything, in terms of administrative processes that the district will get used to. I know you only have one school doing online for, at least planned for, for the field test, but that whole process of making sure you have the infrastructure, getting practice with the technology in terms of the school operating on that, but as well as starting to have the students be able to interact with that. Through the field test, Park will gather data not only on what worked well, what didn't in terms of the administration of the assessment, but also how the items performed. So part of the process of building any test, and we did this for NECAP when, the first year we had NECAP, is we had a field test. And in that, we look at, we gather data on how kids did on all of the items, and look at them to see whether any particular types of items that all kids did really well on or did really poorly on, and to be able to gather data to then help build the test. And that's why we don't report results out on field test items, because we're learning how they actually function and to see if they are actually good items. And as we move forward, there'll always actually be field test items built within the test, so we try the items out. We don't give kids scores on those to be used on future tests. So that's just to explain why we don't give results back on them. And this will also give, so through that process, teachers will ask teachers to do a survey at the end of the Park administration to be able to give their feedback on the processes, but how kids interacted with it in terms of their perceptions of that. We ask kids to give a survey too, in terms of, you know, was it too hard? Was it too easy? How did the tools work? All of those types of things as well, to then be able to inform the future administration next year. So it's really allowing, helping us to build a better test, is by having students provide that information. Are there specific questions you had about the field test that we could answer for you?
What grades the students surveyed?
All the grades.
Three, five, six, seven, nine, and 10.
So they all take the survey?
We asked them all to, anyway.
Is the survey, I did read online, my sense from the FAQ was that the survey, that the teachers were taking, the students were taking, focused on administrative procedures rather than on content. I mean, the teachers will not see any content at all.
Correct.
And they will not even have, had a chance, I assume, when they take it, to have spoken to their students to give you feedback, such as, my students felt very unprepared or my students felt very prepared. So the teachers are just going to be reacting to the administrative process. And the students, will they be asked then about the content of the questions or just on administrative? Did you have difficulty clicking and dragging? Did you understand where to fill in your bubble or whatever?
There's a little bit of both planned for that, you know, some basic questions in terms of the overall content, but not in any large depth. But then in terms of the administration and the procedures of that assessment. And they're slightly different for online and paper, as you would expect, because there are, of the technology-enhanced items where we ask kids to drag and drop as opposed to filling in bubbles or handwriting responses.
And so children who are taking the paper version, that, doesn't that have to differ significantly from the computer version? Because, for instance, the sample question, one of the sample questions I saw online for ELA, and of course, it was the computer version, students read two pieces about Amelia Earhart and then viewed an online video clip. Now, obviously, students taking a paper version will not be viewing any online video clips. Will the students taking the computer version still be viewing video clips? So they're not the same test? The ELA test will be different?
No, there's a strong, there's obviously overlap amongst them, but they're not the same exact test, no.
The, this handout said that field tests will take no more than three hours for most students. Is that three hours per session?
So I want to clarify what you mean by session before I answer that.
Well, online, again, it says that the ELA performance-based assessment has three sessions, 2.5 hours each, so that's seven and a half hours if a student's going to take the PB, three sessions of performance-based assessment. And the end of year is two sessions at two hours each, so that would be four hours. And so if there was a student who was asked to take the PBA and the end of year, that student, according to the math online, would be testing for 11 and a half hours. And in addition to that, that student would complete a test tutorial and practice sample items. So is that correct? Or is the three-hour correct?
I'm just looking for where that part is.
I think what the test states is that children won't be taking the PBA or the end of the year. There'll be different groups of students. I think in theory, there could be times where a student could take both.
But even if they take the PBA, the PBA is given in three sessions.
No, that's correct. I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying that it's not 11 and a half hours.
But that's seven and a half hours then for a PBA, and not the three hours that's noted on your handout.
And that time includes the extra time as planned in there?
Yes.
So the, yes. So it's time that we estimate for kids to be on task as well as extra time built in to allow kids who need a little bit longer to have that.
And the administration time?
Yes.
Yes, so that's, so that seven and a half hour total is actually correct and not this three hours?
That's a estimate. Yes, and I was just looking for where it said it to be specific about what the handout said, but, oh, there we go. Three hours, yes, more than three hours for most students because of the variety of different sessions that kids are taking. So in, so there are, but not in Tiverton, some students who are taking both the performance based and the end of year, but not in Tiverton, so you have primarily kids taking PBA or the end-of-year assessments.
But even with the PBA, I guess we were seeing 50 to 75 minutes, so four hours for each session, so two hours for one day, two hours for the next day for the entire PBA, for instance, in math, would be four hours for the whole test. And then they do highly recommend, well, if it's computer-based, you have, students have to be taken in and take... No, it's not saying they recommend, it's saying that you require. They have to take the tutorial, but even if they're taking the paper, in other words, there's test prep. I mean, we have to teach kids how to take the test. So it's not just putting them in front of it. We've got to walk them through what kind of question, and I don't know how much the teachers will know ahead of time to prepare students for what kind of question, but I guess there will be some sample items.
Yes, so the sample items, so there's the static sample items that have been up for a while, but now there is a practice test that has sample items in it that kids can go in to get a feel for what the items are like and experience the tools. Because that's, that's going to be new for students in terms of the different tools they're able to use, not just the drag and drop, but for kids who need accommodations or for just simple things as spell check. That's allowed in some of the pieces, just knowing how to use some of those tools. We'd want them to be comfortable in it before the day of the test, so they're not anxious about the tools themselves as well.
Now, last year, we participated, as did other districts throughout the state, in those park interims that were given online, or the, you know, the interim assessments that wouldn't be either the that wouldn't be either the PBA or the, but you have those interims that you give throughout the year. Wouldn't those online experiences be similar to those?
So those were Rhode Island tests, they were built for Rhode Island. They were not, they're not the same as the Park, although there are some similar item types, but they are a little bit different.
But the skills would be drag and drop, keyboarding, spell checking?
Those tests don't have drag and drop, so it doesn't have any of the technology enhanced items.
And for those districts and for those students who do not participate in a field test, now I did read that all schools will get practice tests in spring of 2014 with similar items to those students who were field tested.
That is correct.
And for students who were not field tested at all or who were, who used the paper version, is there also going to be an opportunity for those students to go online and experience drag and drop?
The online assessment, the online practice tests are available to, I mean, and any one of you can go in and see them.
So it's not a unique advantage to participating in the field test to have a practice with drag and drop or whatever, or highlighting texts or spell checking? That we could give students that experience without participating?
Yes.
And hopefully, students are learning those skills in order to be able to take the Park exam. But you also don't want kids that are so not facile with technology. Because let's face it, not every district is in the same place as, you know, being able to offer technology to students in a school environment. And so you don't want kids' achievement getting masked by their inability to access the text of the test or the tool. So, you know, hopefully, you know, all of these things like highlighting, spell check, most kids in Tiverton are going to be like, they use that all the time. You know, so it's not a question of they need to learn that so they can take the test. It's a question of making sure that there's a level playing field for all students who do take the test, which is a little different.
So I'm still a little bit fuzzy on the time. So what is, what is the average and what's the range that a student will be taken away from instruction in order to do the field test?
You know, I'd have to really look up the numbers on them. Off the top of my head, I don't know all of the exact times, but I mean, you can, generally, the high school ELA, the ELA tends to be longer because of the passage sets. So the PBAs are the longest assessments in ELA because there are three assessments there. And the math end of year tend to be the shortest ones. But they're all fairly similar in terms of a couple hours would be the range to, again, as they said, of seat time.
Per session?
Yeah.
In a minimum of two sessions?
Because we were looking, we don't have the document here, but we were looking at numbers at our last meeting, which sort of sparked some of this conversation, where we were looking at a week of instruction taken up with the field testing? Does that ring any bells?
Well, so.
I would think that would be.
Well, it would be part of every day. Well, so if you have an ELA class, you're a middle school ELA teacher, and you have four classes a day, and two of those four classes are participating. Now you have those students for 50 minutes a day, five days a week. If you have a class doing seven and a half hours of testing, that's more than a week's worth of class time.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a given class, not an entire week of instruction.
And even the four hours is going to be more, especially when you add in the tutorial. So an English teacher would have a class who lost a week to maybe, if it's seven and a half, two weeks of class time to test. That teacher would not be introducing any new material, would not be having students do any other activities other than test for two weeks.
Well, I mean, it's not unlike, I mean, the kneecaps vary.
Well, that's, and that's it, you know, we sort of, we go through the kneecaps at one part of the year, and then we go through the field test at another part of the year. And we're, you know, starting to approach relatively significant percentages of the school year in testing.
And the students doing the, being asked to do the field test are all also being asked to do the, or required to take the kneecap?
Not this group, not in the field test. Next year's junior class, when we go live with the Park, the junior class will have to take the kneecap in the fall and then the Park in the spring.
Yeah, I think they specifically exempted those grades.
But not this, not in the field test though, a lot of the graders are exempted.
Actually, the.
Or at least in our.
No student will be asked to, by the state, to take the kneecap and the Park in the same year. So for graduation requirements, the kneecap will be there for the fall, and juniors are required to take that. Any student that takes the kneecap in the fall gets a pass on Park testing in the spring.
Okay.
Yep, and just, so we also this year, so you noticed you don't have any, for the end of year assessment, which is going to be in May, we have, we are not testing any kids in grades four, eight, and 11 because they do the science assessment, so we didn't ask. But these, many of these students in grades three through seven did take the kneecap assessment in the fall. That was their last kneecap assessment in the elementary and middle schools.
But just speaking specifically about the field testing, it's still a substantial, it is a block of time away from instruction that is not trivial. Something like, you know, for a given English class, about a week of that English class is in the testing. Is that?
Well, and I think it depends on how you structure the day and whether all of the instructional times comes out of the English class. Because it's not going to be broken up into 50 minutes, 50 minutes, 50 minutes for two weeks. That you'd be looking at taking a larger block of time.
Where you, I think the question is not so much a particular class would be impacted, but overall, the child isn't, won't be worried. It's not, they'll lose out just ELA or math. It's more of a, you know, during that week that you test, they will be reduced in their seat time because they'll be doing.
Well, I guess that's why I'm really interested in the average and the range of, you know, if you get so unlucky that you hit with a lot of the field testing, you know, for whatever reason the way it's structured, how much time are you spending out at the classroom? Or, you know, not in the regular curriculum? And what's the minimum and what's the average going to be for our students? Because that's the real question is, for whatever the benefit is of going through the field testing, what is, what is the cost, what's it taking away?
I mean, so if you think about the ELA PBA, they'll be losing, if you, not that you have to do it three days in a row, but if you did it three days in a row, they'd be losing a good, you know, chunk of their morning instruction three days in a row. As an example, so they'd be losing their morning instruction.
It's been left to the schools to determine how to administer it.
So if they were pulled out, again, I'm most familiar with middle school, so it's a small number of students or a subset, they've spent their morning testing. Their English, math, and science classes have taken place while they were in testing. So are these students now required to play catch up? Or has the teacher in some sense tried to slow down what's being covered? In other words, not offering a test during those three mornings? Because then she would have, or he would have a significant number of students who would have to make up the science test. It does tend to have a snowball effect.
And bleed into the other time of the day, not just when you're sitting in front of the screen or in the booklet taking the test. It's kind of the onset and the offset of the whole process.
And the fatigue then, when you come out, you're not going to want to give those students a test.
I see, I see Ms. Ezavito and Ms. Truver here, did you have any thoughts?
Well, I attended the workshop that you were.
Can you come up, Kaylee?
And CCRI, and so I have all of your PowerPoint information. And my main concern for my students who are third graders, there's two concerns. Is number one, at Fort Barton, we're the only school that both third grades are taking the online test. So we'll have to, in addition to taking the online test, prep them, have them do the practice test prior to, which will take up more time. And I do have a schedule here that Mrs. Wardell wrote out. There will be initial session practice online assessment, which will be 30 to 40 minutes. That will be one period. Then additional practice online session several more times, depending on student facility and comfort and using the computer program provided by the company. Then we're going to do a practice and release task, so that's additionally on top of everything else. Before we get to the actual assessment, what I really am concerned about at your workshop was the very strict structure of the procedure. Is that, for instance, and you can, maybe I got this wrong, but all of the students will have to wait for all of the students to finish before everyone moves on to the next session. So that could be sitting there for two hours, third grade, two hours sitting there to wait for everyone to finish one session.
So are you going to be doing back to back sessions?
No, but we're going to do one session and then the next, like you would suggest, one session one day, another session another day. So two hours one day, two hours the next, and two hours. And this is, what really concerns me is the strict structure of the procedure.
That's a district policy, so if you choose and can set it up where as kids finish, you can quietly allow them to go, whether it's back to the classroom or what, you can do that. It's just that you can't have, and I think that's a misunderstanding, you can't have, you know, 30 kids in there, 20 are on session one, you let 10 go ahead onto session two.
Yes, exactly.
That, we can't do. Once, as kids finish though, they can go back to the classroom and then come back the next day or whatnot to start session two altogether.
Okay, so that answers that question. Mrs. Wardell couldn't be here today because she's had a death in the family and she's on bereavement leave right now. But I do have a list of some pros and cons here that I've reviewed as well and agree with. And if you'd like me to read those to you, I'd be happy to do that and share them. She feels the advantage is that Fort Barton is the only school taking the online version. So we can help test whether or not our district has the capacity on a very small scale to administer Park. And Mrs. Wardell could also give feedback to the other administrators about test administration ease and difficulties. Her feelings towards the disadvantage, in addition to my concerns, we're the only school taking this online version, both third grades are doing it. So the pilot administration, even though being administered also at Ranger in the middle school and the high school, will affect instructionally Fort Barton students more than any other student in Tiverton. Because our students will have to, again, not only practice, do the practice test, which everyone is, it's available to everyone, so they can go on and learn how to highlight. And in third grade, you may think that the children in this town are tech savvy, but they're not at all. I don't think they know how to highlight or use a spell check. I try to implement technology often in my classroom and that's something I've tried to teach them. They just can't grasp highlighting or spell check at this age, it's not appropriate. But, so I think there are some pros and cons. I'm just very concerned, concerned myself about the strict structure and the amount of time taken away from my teaching schedule. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of Ranger School, Goodweather Elementary School in the corner.
And your paper?
I'm sorry?
Your paper, the paper.
The test, your students would take, would take the paper test.
And so initially, before I came tonight, I surveyed my colleagues in grades three. And we had a conversation, even though grade four was not piloting, about whether or not this would benefit our students. And so initially, we thought, well, there are some pros to doing this because it will give us a sense of what the complexity of the questions are. It'll give us a sense of how difficult, what our students aren't prepared to take or to do. And then as we got more information, we realized we weren't getting any feedback about this. So we aren't, we aren't going to get anything back from this. We can't look at the test questions. They're going to take a paper version, which as Mrs. Herman said, is different from the online version, so they're not getting the same experience. And I think the biggest of our concerns is that we have not yet implemented the ELA standards. So any information that you garner from our students, there's a validity issue there. If they haven't been taught the content, even introduced to that content in a way that would make them effective in being able to answer the part questions that are appropriate, what information will you garner from that? So that's one of our biggest concerns is that we've done the, we're working on the math. I won't say we're done with the math, but we're working on that. And they're familiar with some of the newer language, the processes and procedures that are different are coming. But when you look at ELA, we haven't even begun. And so, at least not formally. That's not to say that there aren't pockets of the introduction of those standards into our curriculum, but it's not a formal implementation of ELA. And so to have them take six, seven hours of testing on standards we haven't introduced, for us, it just seems counterproductive. What are our students getting out of that? They're giving up hours of instruction on a paper test that isn't even, they're not even getting the benefit of the online piece, which will be challenging. And so there's not a lot, we just, we just are looking for what is the benefit to our students here? So we might help the testing company, maybe, but if our students haven't been exposed to the content that you're testing them on, their answers to those questions, again, I know I'm repeating myself, how valid is that? How valid is the information that any company might garner from that? So that was one of our concerns. Timing, it's just so much time, we spend so much time assessing. We've already done our kneecap, our local assessments, our quarterly assessments, and now we're looking at another seven hours, we've had four snow days. Just for us, we have more concerns than we do, we have more cons than we do pros at this point. So I don't know if that's helpful, but that was our, that was basically our conversation.
Is Fort Barton online, is it math or ELA? I want to say it's ELA.
It's ELA.
Okay. So we have no math online in our district?
We do not.
Okay.
Yes, hello?
I just have a question I wanted to clarify. Is it entire classes that would be taking the test? Or is it a subset of kids from individual classrooms?
It would be the entire class. It would be the entire class.
All right. Because I wasn't sure, I agree with you, Mrs. Herman, about, you know, regardless of whether kids are pulled out of the classroom, obviously, they're missing that instructional time. But also, you know, the teachers would have to adjust the curriculum so that they didn't fall behind. And you're putting an unfair burden on the kids that took the test. I guess my other question is, I see on the back of this, at the bottom of page two, all students would be able to try out practice tests when they become available in the spring. Is that different from the field testing? Is it a different test or is it just a different administration?
It's a different test, it's not the same field testing. These are just publicly released items.
Okay, so that would be, that would be the official test, or an official demo test that would be available to all?
Yeah.
And the field testing is more that sort of exploratory tool for the testing company, is that right?
So I think I do want to clarify, although there's a testing company helping us administer the test, it actually is helping all of the Park states who work together to develop it. The testing company, so obviously, as states and the consortium, well, this was, all the field test pieces are under the Race to the Top grant, but pay the testing company. But it's benefiting the states who build and implement that test together to better inform a more valid and reliable test. So I wanted to clarify that piece of it. But the test will be made up of items that are similar to ones that are on the practice test now. They're just going to be more available coming in the spring, because there's only a couple of grades right now.
So I guess.
A somewhat basic and maybe night, or maybe unformed question. What exactly are we field testing if we haven't taught the curriculum? We field testing content? We field testing, taking a web or a computer based test or? We field testing, taking a web, or a computer-based test, or how that compares with a paper test? We haven't taught it.
Well, it's...
What are we validating?
I think it's a little bit of everything, because there are districts that are implementing it, some are, they're in various places across all of the park states.
Of Common Core.
Of Common.
I mean, Common Core is the curriculum that matches...
The standards.
The standards that match the park, right?
So while...
I mean, Common Core is still very new and not yet fully implemented, certainly not here.
I think we're doing pretty well. I mean, we obviously heard from the teacher that they're pretty far along in math, but not in ELA in this district, and I would say in other districts that might be opposite is true, or they're feeling more confident in lower grades than higher grades. I think they have a variety of ways that it was implemented. But we've been working on Common Core since we adopted the standards summer of 2010.
So the original design at the state level was to have five full years of transition to the Common Core before students were tested, before we even knew what park was, and actually before we created park as a consortium of states. So, adopted in 2010, first test that counts in spring of 2015, so all districts, although they are different places in their implementation across grade levels and in content areas, everyone in Rhode Island has, will have had five years of implementation when park actually counts next year.
So just so, I mean, let's focus on the park tasks, not Common Core, because that could be a whole nother two-hour discussion.
And I would say our teachers, and correct me if I'm wrong, do not feel like they've been implementing the Common Core for five years and school committee members...
And mostly because they're in the school committees for four years.
School committee members, we, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees had a workshop for us in which they said, "There are no Common Core curriculum materials worth buying yet, don't buy them."
And that was several months ago.
So that's our feeling, that we're not in the fifth year of implementation, there aren't quality curriculum materials for us to buy for our teachers yet, so what we hear from them is, we are far from having implemented the Common Core.
Although they are doing young ones' work and...
Wait a minute, that's not, that's really not accurate. We've, we're in our second year.
We're moving toward, but it's not in implementation.
To say that we haven't done anything is simply incorrect.
No, I did not mean to say we've done nothing.
We've done an awful lot, a little.
We're pushing ahead, but what I've said, we're not in the fifth year of full implementation.
Well, no.
Only three years on the calendar, so if we were up to par at this point, we will be three years into it, not five.
Oh.
Not five, no, I said...
That's what I'm saying. Three years.
Five years.
So the next year when it counts would be four hoarding tiers, but...
And we...
And I think we've been doing everything we can.
We're there.
Yeah, with what we have.
We're working there, and obviously, because we haven't implemented the, we haven't changed over to the ELA, yes, it will be, Jerry's question's legit, I think it's very legitimate in that we haven't, as a district, gotten there, so when you test the students, how valid does that become? I mean, I don't know how you would know that, how, where this data goes, how that gets processed, because districts are at different places, regardless of how they implemented it, when they implemented it.
If they started with math or ELA.
Yeah, we're not all at the same place. We did math first, for example, because it's harder in general.
No, I agree with you, Bill, and, you know, but that's actually part of the feedback that states want to get.
Right.
Is, is where are our districts? And are there, because you have sixteen states, including DC, in this consortium, you know, where are we as a state? I mean, we may be small, but we are a leader in this initiative, and we actually have quite a bit of clout with the National Consortium about this test. And so where Rhode Island is, is very important. That's actually part of the information we're trying to get, because, you know, there isn't any interest in testing kids for things that they have never been instructed in. That's one of the reasons we're moving to park and away from the kneecap, because we've had, especially at the high school level, years of kids getting tested on things they haven't been instructed in. You know, when you've got close to a third of the kids taking the math test in high school, have never had geometry, you know, what are they going to show you? They're not going to show you knowledge of geometry if they've never been instructed. The other thing I would just make a quick comment on is that true standards-based instruction, and I think Bill would back me up on this, is all about getting your teachers to the place where they really have deep understanding of the standards. And it's not, you know, we had the new standards reference exam, it was out there for, what, fifteen, sixteen years, and believe me, everyone was selling, you know, compliant curriculum materials, and it was all crap. You're never going to be able to buy something off the shelf that's going to be as good as things that well-prepared teachers do in their own classrooms. So that's just, that's the nature of education.
Agreed.
That's my little speech.
Right, no, but, and again, and we're, I don't know if we're reflective of other districts, but it takes a long time, as you know, to transition over. And then, as you said, to get teachers to being comfortable, and I think that's what we heard tonight from the two teachers that spoke, they're simply not comfortable, and I understand that, because I'd be the first one to say, we still have to continue getting our teachers comfortable there. But we have been plugging along, if you could take a message back, I mean, at least from our little patch of paradise, we're plugging along, you know, and it's not easy, but, you know, we are, you know, we are trying to get there, you know, per, you know...
I mean, something that hasn't come up today, and I'll just, you know, put it right on the table, I mean, obviously, we understand that there's anxiety that comes with change, including moving to new standards, moving to new tests. I am part of the value, in my opinion, of doing this in every community, is so that the test doesn't hit your community for the first time when it counts. Don't underestimate the value of just having the exposure as a school community to this new test, what it looks like, oh my god, our kids aren't ready. You have a year to react to that. If you put all of this off to the first time you're going to get any feedback is when the test actually counts, how is that to your advantage? So...
And so how will we know, you said if we don't participate, we might be caught off guard and say, oh, our kids aren't ready, but if we're not getting the scores back and we're not allowed to see the questions, even when, if we participate in the field test, how will we know if our kids are ready or not ready? As field test participants?
Well, I mean, I haven't been in the classroom in a long time, but, you know, you do get feedback about how well-prepared your kids are by watching them take a test. And you're, there is going to be a tremendous amount of information. If kids are putting their pencils down after ten minutes, and in twenty minutes, you've got every single kid looking at a blank piece of paper, that's data, you know? So you may not be able to do item analysis, and we're not going to sit here and tell you you'll be able to do that, but it's not as if it will not have benefit to your community.
Can I ask, in that regard, then, will Park provide the administrative teachers some type of form, questionnaire, response form, so that they can, will get things and say students are this kind of behavior, this kind of activity, this is what's happening at this point in the test, but will Park provide those to the teachers?
Yes.
So there is a survey as part of it, and I know we meet with our district curriculum directors, so as Rhode Island even of ourselves, that is some of the information we'd want to discuss and speak with them about. So while they can't ask kids, so what was question one, and talk about specific things, they certainly can have conversations about how they felt about the test, and did they, were those things that they were surprised by, and was the content hard, and being able to say, my kids, none of them finished, or all of them finished in ten minutes, because you're, as you're watching and monitoring. So that is information that we'll collect, not only through the survey, but anecdotally, we want to have those conversations with our districts.
Although...
Is there consideration for then, if we're doing a pilot now, where we're not going to, teachers are not going to get the feedback, we will be providing the information, but not getting feedback to use in our classrooms? Is there consideration for using this pilot as a method for Park to assess, validate what they're doing?
That's exactly what it is.
Then provide that back for a second pilot, and then provide that data to the teachers for use in the classroom? Because this really needs to be a longer process than one pilot, then under the pilot.
No, I mean, that's a valid point, and going back to something that Phyllis was trying to explain, so the creation of these tests, it's not an off-the-shelf, we're buying a test product. The states are working together and doing item development, and that includes teachers, that includes our staff. There are literally hundreds and hundreds of teachers creating tens of thousands of items, and those items are going to be drawn upon to create appropriate tests. And so part of, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I...
Well, the vendors writing the items, the states and the teachers review them, give feedback for them to make changes, but yes.
But the point, the point I'm making is that there are many more items that are available to draw on to create the test that kids will be taking in the spring than are needed. They don't, if you need a hundred items on a test, you don't create a hundred items, you might create a thousand. And so this feedback is really critical for this process to make sure that the tests are appropriate when they do count. Because you, it's not, you really want to get kids, you know, where they are, but that doesn't mean that you want to dumb down what you're looking for, but you obviously don't want to miss your kids completely, because you're not going to get any information that's worthwhile unless you're testing kids within the realm of where the whole body of kids are. And that's probably the single biggest use of this item review, is making sure that we're testing a window of the cohort where their performance actually should be, given where districts are. And so, you know, I don't think that Rhode Island, I think every state in the country is facing the same challenges. Everyone that I talked to from other states, they have the same kind of picture of their states. We've got some districts that have gone math first, are very deep, we have some that have gone ELA, we have some that have gone elementary, and they're working their way through the grades. But we know that there's a very uneven picture, and so getting a better handle on where districts really are in terms of preparing these kids against the new standards, it's really what this is all about.
So let me ask a more, another very basic question. We're field testing something, we're presumably going to learn something from, someone is going to learn something from this field testing.
Yes.
Who's going to learn it, and where is the information going to be available to the general public, or school committees, or districts, or State Department of Health, or the other thing?
Department of Health, other job.
So there's a lot of pieces then. In terms of actual student performance on items, you know, at the aggregate level, we'll look at item five, you know, what populations of kids took it?
Who's we?
So, yes, so park states along with the vendor.
Okay.
Will do that. We have their statisticians and psychometricians that help us to look at all the data around those items. Teachers, as they start to build the test, our content folks get together and will have, as one piece of this, data meetings, look at the items, and we look at it just like we actually do for all of our items that we have done historically for kneecap, to look at performance. And one of the things that, because we're in a transition year, that we are considering is, as Dave said, was that we are transitioning. So what does the effect of the transition have, but also looking at bias and sensitivity, and whether, you know, kids performed differently from different populations. Now, although through the item development process, that's looked at as well, but through a field test, we also look at that. Or even just in general, did an item perform really poorly, because maybe it wasn't worded clearly? So that would not be an item we would put on the test.
And how would you determine that students did poorly because it was worded ambiguously as opposed to content was not yet covered?
That's, to be honest with you, I don't think you get to that, I don't think you'll ever truly know some of that. I think based on data and experience from item writers who've been doing this a long time, and the content specialists, they could guess at why that was. But you're right, to some extent, we're not going to know deeply whether it was content or whether it was an ambiguously worded item, I think.
Kind of depends on the nature of the item, too.
And this we, though, this, I'm confused, is this we like people in Washington, is this, the commissioners of education, is this actually a group of people that lie?
A consortium?
Does any of this trickle down to teachers or school committees?
No.
Or is this very proprietary information that the vendor wants to keep confidential?
I don't think it's the vendor as much as it's the consortium.
Yeah, it's, so actually, what will likely happen when a technical manual, if you actually look in the back of our kneecap technical manual, you'll look at data on items. It's the same process that we're going to go through, so it eventually becomes somewhat public in that way, and through a technical manual. But it's educators, it's statisticians who understand test development and those pieces, state assessment directors like myself.
Who worked, so not educators who are currently working in district classrooms, but...
Well, they may be, but they work for the consortium.
Maybe, not, yeah.
But it's not going to trickle down, I think Dr. Lockhart was wondering if it trickles down to us.
Not as, so there will be public reports at that point, on that level, but then there's also part of that, so that's one piece of it, is the data on the actual items to build the test. But the other part of this is that there's several research studies going on to better understand how kids are interacting with the different accommodations pieces, for example. So making sure that the accommodations that are being used and the policies that have been put in place in the accommodations manual as it is makes sense, so collecting data on that and looking at to see whether the kids who have, for example, the read-aloud accommodation, that it's actually making a difference for the kids who are using it. There's one piece of it, there's actually a technology study that's also going on as well. We've done some of these in smaller groups, but now we'll have larger populations to do that with. So whether kids are using tablets, or iPads, or Apple computers, or, you know, all of those types of things, is collecting data on whether there is a differential performance based on those types of things.
So let me ask a question in a different way. If I'm a parent of a child who's gone through the field test, and they may have learned some things, you know, themselves by process of going through the test, you know, they've had, sort of a rehearsal's always a valid experience. But I know that at a national level, or at a state level, or at a consortium level, things were learned about this whole process, and I want to go online, I want to find out what they learned about this, so that I can better prepare my child for the test when they are going to take it when it counts.
Yeah, Park is planning to do some lessons learned.
Is that going to be available in the short term, where it's going to be readily accessible to parents, teachers, school committees, that's important?
Yeah, on a variety of topics, so they do want to publish lesson learned, for example, in terms of how did the technology implementation go? What went well, what didn't go well? So they are planning to do some of those kind of outcomes of what we learned from the field test, yes. And those would be public documents.
Okay.
Mr. Riemer, can you tell us what you think?
I understand everybody's concern about the amount of time away from the classroom that we've talked about, what our teachers talked about. I'm also concerned that, you know, some of our kids, simply because we're not there yet, you know, we're going to be given this assessment. And I'm not an expert enough to say, and Dave talked about it, the impact on taking the test and the experience, not just for the students, but for our teachers, and, you know, how much are they going to get out of it? Especially with the technology piece, you know, that's going to be an important part to the feedback that our teachers see, how the kids do on those pieces, even with the practice test that they're taking. Does it outweigh taking them away from class for the amount of time we talked about? I'd probably say no. I'd say the teaching time's more important, but if you're looking at a bigger picture issue, the park is coming, it's going to be with us for some time, and the sooner we can expose our kids to taking, at least taking it, I don't think it would hurt them or our teachers to take it. But I certainly can understand and respect everyone's view, you know, the concerns that have been brought up today about it as well.
Are we either all in or all out? Can we pick and choose? Can we say we only are going to do the online one? Or is the district all in, or you're all out?
No. I don't answer how, I think, but...
And the parents can opt out of this?
Well, it's voluntary.
Right. We would, we have to notify them, we have to communicate with the parents, their options.
So it's not part of the state testing regiment? So, I mean, technically, it is entirely voluntarily, you know, at a district level, so if you could opt completely out from a... So, if you could opt completely out from a legal perspective, you could opt partially out. I would only say, I would ask, that if the committee moves in that direction, that you at least consult with us about what you might whittle it down to. I don't know off the top of my head whether, you know, given what other districts are doing, how critical it is that we get, you know, information. Like, would it be more important, if you're only going to do one, that you did the online? Or, you know, do we need, you know, the math at a certain grade level? I wouldn't know.
Or the random selection of students means that you want all of us -- you don't want us to cherry pick among them because that screws up the random sampling so that we'd be all in or all out.
Right. And with all due respect, my concern is for the district and the kids, not what RIDE needs necessarily. But I understand that -- no, I definitely understand that we may mess up. You know, it may not be valid for you to have us--
No, I would just want you to have the information before you made your decision.
Right, right, right. No, absolutely. So, I definitely understand that. I guess my concern is going back to the pros and cons, is that is the experience of taking the test, which is going to be very anecdotal? Did they put their pencil down? Did they look to -- you know, most third graders I know would throw their pencil down in the first 20 minutes anyway, I don't care what tests they're taking, especially the fill-in-the-bubble standardized test. So, I'm not sure what we'd necessarily gain from that. As far as where the districts are, I think there's a lot of states -- I mean, you just -- Park was administered to the entire state of New York. Rhode Island is smaller, or most of New York. Rhode Island is smaller than the New York City. There are two states -- please, you guys, can I just -- thank you. There are two states that, to get their No Child Left Behind waiver, they're only doing the field testing. So, I don't necessarily think Tiverton, being in this field testing, is going to be so monumental that, you know, we're going to, you know, shift the, you know, the Park test one way or the other. I do think it's important, however, to have field testing. I mean, that's the whole point. I think it's extremely important. I applaud RIDE for doing the field testing, for being part of the field testing. But where we're not getting any data back, where the teachers aren't getting any data back, where the teachers can't look at the tests, where, as people have noted, we can take the test later and practice. And, you know, I'm just not sure where we're benefiting from taking the test. I think there's lots of things we can do to benefit us for when we do take them. I'm just not sure that we can't get them in some other way other than taking the test. It's kind of where I am. Thank you, Amy. I'm sorry.
Oh, no. Quite right. I just had some questions. How many Rhode Island teachers are working on the item analysis on the testing?
So, the item development and review? So, some have gone to some meetings and not others, but there's probably about a dozen teachers who have been involved in different parts of the process.
And is there a list of their names or?
We could certainly -- yes, I don't have them on me, but--
Okay. The other question I had is, I'm a special ed teacher, and you mentioned that you were going to be collecting the effective -- information on the effectiveness of accommodations. How are you collecting that information?
So, there are some specific schools and districts that are -- not, so Rhode Island doesn't do any, but certain states that are actually doing kind of a special procedure for the administrations of the test to test those pieces.
But Rhode Island is not taking part in that?
Not those specialized studies. They are in terms of giving feedback on some of the accommodations like extended time. So, in terms of -- and that's just really survey information at the end to determine whether the extended time was enough, was it too long, was it too short, those types of things.
Diane Santa, please, curriculum coordinator, who's been working so hard with the district.
Well, working along with the teachers. And I just had a couple of notes regarding the timeline. Unfortunately, the funding did not match the timeline, so we didn't receive the funding to do our math curriculum until just last year. So, there was a little bit of a delay, and it's been kind of challenging. And also, at the elementary level, you have teachers that are trying to, you know, just get used to a failing in science curriculum a couple of years ago that we did, and then working on the math curriculum, and then we've got ELA, so capacity issue. It was, you know, impossible to have everybody fully prepared. And even with the new curriculum and the professional development needed, it really is like a three-year process. So, I fully understand where teachers are coming from, where they're saying that we're not fully implemented. And wondering how well our students would do on the items because they haven't had a number of years of instruction with that. And also, the gaps from students in previous grades who, you know, hadn't had that instruction. And also, with regards to the resources, we know that it's not about buying a resource, but whatever is out there, even for teachers to look at, there are discrepancies, there are major issues with that. So, it's extremely frustrating. It takes much, much longer for teachers to evaluate the effectiveness of anything that they use with their students to align it. And, you know, in talking with other districts around Rhode Island, most of them are in the same shape as we are, that we're not fully implemented and that we're kind of in this transitional stage. So, it is difficult to think about giving our students an assessment. I think that if we do participate, that we need to be presented to them very delicately to let them know that a lot of it may be challenging for them. But, you know, I do agree that there are benefits, I think, from a procedural standpoint for teachers to have the administration guide and go through the practice of going through those steps with students. I think that that would be helpful rather than next year when we, you know, dive into it for real. I think it takes away some of that stress factor that just extends through the process. I am concerned about the time away from instruction. However, I do feel that there is some instructional value in students reading and answering questions related to tests. It's something that we do on a routine basis also. And lastly, I am disappointed that we won't get feedback on how our students feel, for better or for worse. Or I'm hoping that, at least with the survey data from teachers and students, that that will be released publicly. It would be nice if we could get that back as a district, at least that would give some feedback on how well our students felt that they were prepared.
You know, in regard to that, what level of authority is that decision made? Why can't we have it?
I don't know if it's a question of authority as much as it is at what level are the data valid? Because of the testing sample.
Right. And that's something else that came out online. Part of the reason they don't want to release questions is because they may decide they're completely invalid questions, and there'll be no questions like them on the real Park. And same thing with administration procedures. You shouldn't think that these are going to be the same administration procedure next year when it really counts. So, that sort of feeds into what are we really gaining if this is still so much influx? As Mr. Forrest said, this is so preliminary.
We don't know if it's valid or not, and we get back those results and we say, well, half of it is valid, half of it isn't valid. Why not then put together a test that really appears to be valid? And then, in a sense, pile that again for the benefit of the students and the teachers? The first pilot's for the benefit of Park, maybe the second pilot should be the benefit of the students and teachers. So, the people then get accustomed to what to expect.
Well, so that's, I guess that's, you know, another way of putting that. It's sort of a foolish consistency that we, in 2010, said in 2015 it's going to count. But as Mrs. Santa pointed out, we are a year, maybe 12 months, maybe 18, into implementation of a curriculum that meets the Park. Why aren't we trying to field test this for longer? Is there some reason why we have to go this fast?
Well, you can talk to your congressman. I mean, that's the ultimate answer. So, the ESEA--
Was that the race-to-the-top requirement, that things be in there?
No, no. It's --
With the Governor's Association.
What you commonly refer to as No Child Left Behind, that Elementary and Secondary Education Act actually requires every state to have an annual assessment and requires certain uses that that has to be put to. Now, it is not outside the realm of possibility that that -- something might happen at the national level. The ESEA is up for reauthorization. This administration's been very interested in waivers and greater state autonomy with that system. Right now, as federal law stands, we're locked in to using the 2015 Park assessment for all of the purposes that ESEA requires.
Could we not continue to use the kneecap? We have to.
Well, the problem with the kneecap is it's not aligned to the common core. And so--
But if we're not really teaching common core yet--
So, we have no -- right, we have no real good assessment yet.
You'd be creating a situation where you've got people driving on both sides of the road.
You're right. The old assessment isn't -- won't be valid, and the new one won't be valid, and we're in that interim period.
But I get the whole, I mean, you can't -- you have to field test in order to write the test, so it's this whole chicken and the egg thing. But I think you're right. It's like the bigger question is why the hurry?
I think the question really comes -- because that--
The bigger concern to me is that, I guess, next year is the last year of kneecap for the graduation requirement. Does Park then become the graduation requirement the year after that?
In two years after that.
So, the first year of Park for 11th graders and 12th graders will not be a graduation requirement? So, is there going to be a gap in the graduation requirement?
No. No, that's the reason that we need to continue providing the kneecap just for 11th graders for the next two years so that we have a smooth transition. So--
So, the 11th graders--
This year's 10th grade class will take it again next year.
Exactly. So, this year's 10th grade class will be the last class to graduate under the kneecap.
Right, and then Park would roll in sixth.
So, then it's going to roll into Park as the requirement.
Correct.
How is that going to work since--
Oh, boy.
I know that's a large question.
Can we come back on that? It's complicated? No, it is. There's an answer. So, at the high school level, it gets complicated because the -- especially on the math side, you're moving from a single year being tested and a single math comprehensive test to end-of-course testing. And so, the good news there is you'll no longer have kids taking geometry items that have never taken a geometry class. Not the bad news, but the downside of that is you have a much more complex system where some kids are taking -- and in fact, you, in this very high school, you may have kids in 10th -- some 10th graders taking Algebra I, some 10th graders taking a geometry, and some 10th graders taking an Algebra II. That's a very likely outcome, which is more reflective of your course-taking patterns. And that's not a terrible thing, but it makes the graduation elements of that requirements a little more complex. I'm sorry?
It's not worked out.
Stay tuned, Mr. Forrest.
As now with kneecap, right, you get one, you do all the other various things, waivers and so on. What will be the bottom line with Park?
So, we're not sure yet.
Stay tuned.
So, we're going to implement something in a year that we're really not in. We have a -- I don't think -- we're going to have one pilot and then implement this test as a graduation requirement, but we're not sure all going to do it.
Actually, no. We'll have a full year. So, using your analogy of another year of a pilot, in effect, we will get information, not just from Rhode Island, but from all of the Park states about how high school students generally do. There are also other elements in play. So, for example, there are course codes that are national, and so, you can actually measure the rigor of a class here at Tiverton High School against the rigor of a class that's called the same thing in Colorado or New York. And so, part of the analysis that will be done is what courses at what level of rigor do kids really need to be exposed to in order to achieve success at Park? And believe me, that is definitely going to inform our thinking because we course-coded every course offering in the state over the last two years. And so, we know where the levels of rigor are in the different districts. And, you know, frankly, we're not, you know, Tiverton is not at the top of the list, but we have deep concerns about course-taking patterns and level of rigor of courses that kids are being exposed to. And we know right now, and you talk about wanting to align the test, we know kids are underprepared, especially in our urbans. They've never seen -- they see math and are asked to do levels of thinking on the kneecap that they've never been asked to do in a classroom, and how fair is that? You know, does that make the kneecap a bad test? No, not from our perspective. It's a question of having higher expectations and making sure that the kids have access to rigorous instruction across the entire state, and not in a cookie-cutter way. But, you know, that's an issue in Rhode Island that, and if you're black and poor or speak Spanish, you're not getting exposed to the same level of rigor as if you're suburban and white. And that's just a fact.
All right, guys. Agenda item is the field test, and it's a great conversation, but for open meeting purposes, I think we need to get back to the agenda item.
Do you have something to add about the field test?
Just a question, and I don't mean this in a snarky way at all. So, if we're talking about this being an experiential thing, the kids get experience, teachers get experience, and knowing what we know about every time we've implemented something new, we've done it many times over the years, there's always a dip. So, we can expect that our results from Park next year--
Oh, yeah.
-- will be much lower than our last year of kneecap. So, is there any harm for districts like us that are really in an off-kilter stage of implementation to go into the next spring's Park as this is our pilot? Because our kids aren't really, you know, we're not sure about the field testing. We know we're going to dip. It's not as though this field test is necessarily going to help us perform any better on next spring's Park, per se. So, is there any harm, and I am truly asking this, is there any harm in looking at next spring as our pilot, knowing that our results will probably be not great?
Would you like the school committee's answer?
Yeah. They might be different.
Because we're -- yeah. I think they might be different.
Right. That's the question we're addressing tonight.
Because I think the question that the school committee needs to answer.
No, but the thing is, you said that, thank you for coming, first of all. You said that next year's Park is going to count for everything of No Child Left Behind and all those evaluations. So, as an educator since 1967, I find this whole conversation absolutely incredible. I really do. Because I worked in Massachusetts with the kneecap, the MCAS, and I saw it went into that for 10 years, pre-test, post-test, the -- how slowly they went with it, how carefully they went with it. And then, a few weeks ago, and I told everyone here, I went to see the head of the Department of Education in Massachusetts give a speech. Okay? And what he said was, "Don't think we're going to jump into this park. Let me tell everyone in this room," and it was full of legislators and all the higher people. He said, "Because we're not, we're going to put this on pause, look at this very carefully," as they did the MCAS. For us to say that we're not ready, we didn't have the money, as Mr. Ririck said, I've been here nine years, I know how the hell hard we've been working with ELAs and GSEs and all these other things, and then kneecap, and now we're switching to Park and we're going to count it next year? I mean, I find it absolutely incredible as an educator. I started with hyperkinetic kids, and then they turned to ADD and ADHDI, and then we had whole word and phonics. I've been through so many iterations in education, and this is astounding that we would do this to the students and to the parents and to the children of Rhode Island.
I mean, with all due respect to Mitchell Chester, I mean, there are tough choices. And so, states that are going to slow down in their transition to Park are going to keep their state tests, like MCAS. And a lot of kids are going to get double-tested, you know, and--
They're administering both next year.
You know, a big part of this conversation was how much time testing takes. There's a downside to these decisions, and a lot of them are Hobson's choices. So, you know, Massachusetts is in kind of an unusual position. At the least of which Mitch Chester is head of Park.
He's the chair of the governing board. So, they are just -- they are administering Park and their MCAS tests, so they're paying for actually two tests.
But they're not going to count it.
Next year. No, well, that is their plan that he's put forth.
Right. So, I can just say that Mr. Ririck and Mr. Fiorelli and I were at the original kickoff of this in 2010 at the Hyatt Hotel with Governor Cachieri and all. This is where it kicked off, Commissioner Guest and everyone. And right then and there, we had questions. We had many, many questions, and they still haven't been answered. So, I mean, I know that if my kids play sports or if they're in a band or if they're in a drama, they have to rehearse, they have to practice, so I wouldn't let them play. I wouldn't let them go make a fool of themselves in a play. So, they have to practice. So, I think the practice is important. I understand that. But all these other questions, I agree with Mr. Ririck and Ms. Diane Santa. I have three grandchildren in the school system that are being faced with this, as he has children in the school system, and taught them about the tests all the time, and you know, what they think of them, and I can't repeat what they say, but, so anyway, this is a very, very serious, and I'm glad you came and you answered our questions, we really appreciate it, because we're all in this together. And you know what? We're here for all the kids. Because someone said to me, they said, "Why are you concerned about this? It's an urban issue." I said, "No, it's not. All these kids in this state are all our kids. And the kids in Tiverton, like my grandchildren, play Minecraft, they're amazing, but to do this kind of test, they couldn't do it. They don't have the abilities that you might think they have, you know, even though they have all the stuff at home and everything. So, we're all in this together, and we all have to look at this as a state."
Couldn't agree more.
And we really appreciate it.
We wouldn't be here if we didn't think exactly the same thing. We would have just said, "No, go ahead, make your decision." But, every community counts.
They do.
Absolutely.
We all have an incentive falls, all of us are in this together.
So, at the end of the day, though, we are elected-
Yeah.
...to do what's best for-
To make our decision.
-our district.
Before we continue, can we let Dave and Bill, I mean, if we're done, no need to keep them in.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
The last time I was in this room, I worked for you.
Say, time, as time goes on, nothing changes, Dave.
Thank you.
Still the same place.
Yeah, exactly. No, he was, he was our Steven Robinson.
He passed the baton to Steven.
Good night.
Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so that's our, our task. So, so even if we, even if we decide to have it, our parents can still decide-
Yes.
-not, not to, but it's, it's, it's really, are, are the pros, few as they may be, outweighing all the cons?
If we don't do this, are we going to have the same conversation next year with arguments?
No, we don't have a choice next year.
We are doing it for the first time.
We don't have a choice.
Well, I understand, but are we going to complain? Why didn't we have a chance to try it?
No, no. And I'll tell you, I think the, I agree, there are some-
I think Diane, I think Denise is right, that will be our-
But there are some benefits to participating, but I think most of those benefits can be accrued by having students try out the practice tests, which will be available, and doing those practice questions online, guided by their teacher, the teacher can see the question, the teacher can have the students work with the question at a time when the teacher thinks the student should be able to master it. And then, that will inform the teacher's practice about, "Well, I knew my kids could do this on a paper test, but they're really having trouble online, so we need to address that skills, you know, gap, because it's an online issue and not a paper issue." I think that meaningful feedback, we can get overwhelming majority of it by using these practice tests when it makes sense to, and when we, and thereby not lose the hours of instructional time and not subject our children to more standardized tests, particularly ones they're not prepared for. And, and that is an issue to me. I understand that we, we live in a society which insists that we subject our children to standardized testing, even though the nations that score the top do not. Somehow, we've decided that in order to get to the top, we have to do something very different from the nations that are at the top in terms of educational achievement. But, I think it's important to minimize the amount of standardized testing that our, that our children are subjected to. I think the, they're already doing more than enough. And so, my preference would be not to have our students participate in this field testing this year.
I, I actually think we'll be better prepared having our teachers work through the practice tests and talking to our kids and asking them, and I, I think that will better prepare us than just doing these field tests where there's no conversation, there's no back and forth, because I can't even imagine the feedback you're going to get from a third, fifth, or even sixth grader on a survey.
No, and he's right, they put their heads down, they put their pencils down, they cry, I mean, those are your reactions, that's how you know when they're stressed. And I think they might feel better about it if we were at least all doing it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is we can do the same sort of thing, it's just, we'll do it in a more interactive way, you don't need to take the field test, I think.
We have, I, I think you really have to think about what, where you're going.
Yeah.
Because what you're doing is putting off the inevitable. If you want to do, first of all, Park's coming.
No, we know.
And it's here.
And we're going to work with sample items.
But, you know, this idea that, well, we'll take our time.
No, no, no.
And we, no.
That's not what I said.
I'm not done. I didn't say you did say that. I didn't say you said that. That's the, I just heard that. Mrs. Herman said that, that we're taking, we're going to-
With the test quest, did I say that?
With the test questions, well, how are you going to do it? You're going to use, you're going to lose time at some point, whenever that optimum time is, to come and do that practice test, that, that we talked, what you just talked about. There's going to be time away from instruction, whether it happens now, or whether it hap, next spring, um, excuse me, next fall, are we going to be wanting to take kids offline then, when it's for real? I'm just saying that you, we need to, you need to, I ask you to really think about it, because we're putting it off, because at some point, they're going to have to jump in to the pool and, and try to swim, and they're going to, and whether we do it, we can't do it online at the middle school, because I'm not sure we have enough computers, okay? Which is another issue. But, you are going to use time, this is my point, there's, time's going to be used up to do that practice test. Whether you do, however you get to it, you're still going to use, lose instructional time.
Are you, are you all set? I agree, I absolutely agree. What I'm saying is, I think you can, if you're going to use the same amount of time, I think you can more effectively use the time by having the teachers working more closely with the children and, and interacting. I think it's going to take the same amount of time, so why, if, if you're going to spend a week, I'd rather see the teachers take that week and guide the students, look at the test questions with the students, interact with the students, that, I'd rather see the time taken that way than just filling out the bubble tests.
But you are going to take that time.
But, but I agree.
And what I'm saying is, and what I'm saying is, there's going to come a point, there's going to be a push, when do we say it's time?
Well, it'll have to be next year.
Really? Because then we're into the real time.
Well, right.
My professional opinion is, if you put this off until the next year to say, "We're going to just start dabbling and practicing," it's, it's too late in the game.
No, I'm not saying we put it off to next year, I'm saying this spring.
So then we're going to, okay, so this spring, we're going to take time away.
We'll take the same, we'll just switch the time. Instead of spending-
We're only taking the time from-
We're already taking-
Right, and this, this is my point, too.
Excuse me, can they come to the microphone?
Yeah.
Can I just scream?
Up, girls!
Well, my, my response to that is, the field test is 10% of the students in the district. We want to prepare all of our students for the Park. And the way to prepare all of our students for the Park is to have all of them have an opportunity to work with the sample questions, which will be available in the spring, that even if we do that field test for 10%, that 10% will do twice, because they'll do the field test, and then, along with the other 90%, they'll be doing the practice samples. So, my preference is for us to prepare all of our students and have them all take the time, yes, it will be time spent working-
That's correct, as long as you're aware that it's going to be time.
But it, it will be all of the students-
And it has to happen in the spring.
-in the spring, yes, it will have to be this year.
When we're, when we're testing for science as well.
Well, but, but we would be taking-
I'm trying to make a point, there's no optimum time.
Right.
And everybody's trying to make out that there's an optimum time to do this, there is none. We are on a very tight timeline, and the sooner we expose our students to this, this process, I think the better our students and teachers will be.
And teachers will expose them to the procedures, so how are you going to test the procedures of administering this test if you are going to go over time?
Well, there's going to be, there's going to be, there's going to be practice tests, and they can take them.
But, this is, this is going to be done on our schedule and our terms, not following the Park procedures.
Right.
So, the test-
Because I think we'll get more feedback. If, if, if we can take practice tests, we'll get the feedback that we need, we won't get that from doing their field testing. We essentially can do our own field testing, and we'll get the feedback that we need. We'll get the feedback that will be missing, and we'll involve all of our students instead of just 10%. So, we'll get the practice that they all need, we'll get more feedback, and Bill's right, it will take the same amount of time, but instead of, instead of taking time away to give the benefit of the knowledge to the consortium, we take the time to use the benefit of the knowledge for our district and our teachers, and we do it for all of our students. Yes?
Want to tell you one, this teacher, and so, what I'm interested in doing, I'm looking at the administrator of the task, is taking the practice test on the LCD with the class, with the laptops right there, or in the library, or whatever, seems to be the best point, the image point for the Wi-Fi, and going through it and decomposing each question, discussing how would we approach it, and teaching them how to go through the capabilities of the system, like they don't know how to highlight, you know, how to spell check, and so, and I'm not even sure how it works on their system, so I'll need to also be learning that as well, so that I can teach them. And I did plan on doing that regardless of this, whether we do the field test or not. That is already planned into our, you know, upcoming agenda. So, I'm, I'm interested in teaching them and, and looking at the questions and seeing what's coming up, and I feel that I'll learn a lot that way. But it sounds like I'm not even going to be allowed to be looking at this test.
No, not at all.
They were saying, "I can't look at this test."
You're not allowed to view any questions.
No, if you look at the FAQ on the Park website.
No, I'm not allowed to, I can't bone rock it with my bone, I can't write anything down, I can ask the kids, "What did you think?" And what do you think of their behavior, or their teacher, the thing we said? Oh, it's great.
I'd just like to add, technologically speaking, we do not have enough computers, laptops at any of the elementary schools for more than one class to, to do it online at a time, if you wanted to do it that way. We have no LCD projectors in the middle school or high school for, for that kind of instruction. In other words, we're just going to be going back to what we do for, similar to kneecap prep.
But that would be no different for the field test, we only have one, two classes that are doing the online anyway.
No, I'm just saying, but, but this idea that everyone's going to be online and we're simply, that's not, that's not going to happen, it's going to be very limited for those that can do the online version, if, because we're all doing it together.
Even if they do the paper, they're all doing it together, versus 10% of the class.
Right, and I'm saying they should all do it together, they should do that. I just don't, I think the more times our kids take a crack at it, the better off they're going to be in, in the process of taking the test. But, I understand the objections.
I just want to add one more thing to think about, the practice tests online that are available now that you can log in and you take a test that has 17 questions, the questions that are there now are for grades, they're by grade span. So, if I'm a grade three teacher, if I use this, the questions are for grades three through five. Sorry, do I?
Yeah, they're going to change that.
Yeah, it says all students will be able to try out practice tests when they become available this spring.
Yeah, those will be different than the ones that are coming in the spring. So that all students can practice before taking the full test in 2015.
And, and I think we, I hear agreement that, that all students should have the chance to practice.
Well, let's just make a motion and let's vote.
Unless anyone has any more questions.
Did they say they wanted us to let them know if it was all or some or?
Depends on the, on the action of the committee.
I will, I will still, I will still urge everyone to listen to what Bill is saying, because he has the most experience in operational issues, and we look at this from a policy perspective, and this is purely operational issue, that people have to go through these motions and see what this does, and even learning what are the logistical problems, what are the organizational problems in taking this test. Yes, not everyone is going to do it, but this is our sample and our observation of what's happening here, to, what's going to happen, and then we can deal with this, and then maybe, based on some of this information, we, feedback we receive for those who are part of this, teachers, administrators, et cetera, we can make our plan how to do it right with everyone preparing kids. Otherwise, do you already know how to do it? I don't, I don't feel qualified to do this without any kind of feedback, so-
I think that's the problem, Jan, is most of us feel like we're not getting any feedback from it. The only feedback that you're going to get is, "It was hard to administer, the kids put their pencils down." And, and you feel that that limited, limited feedback is worth taking-
Loss of instruction.
-the loss of instruction time, and all of the other things we discussed.
Mr. Verrick?
Come on, sir.
Just being redundant.
So, I don't think I've felt as ambivalent about anything that's come before this committee as I do about this particular issue. I think in an ideal world, we would all say that Park is coming, but we would want to implement it in a very deliberate way and, and have the standards in place for five, 10, 15 years, whatever it takes, because that's what you really want to do, is you want to build the infrastructure, you want to build the car, and then you want to see how fast it can go. And this is really just analogous to saying, "You don't like the way the car works, so you're going to make it drive faster," and that's clearly not really a practical solution. But unfortunately, we, that's out of our hands. I think it's actually ultimately unknowable, really, what the benefit or the bad downside of, of doing the field testing is. There seem to be some possibilities of benefits, and I'm a little bit reassured by the fact that there will be some disclosure of what is learned nationally and perhaps even locally from doing the field testing. And I do believe strongly in rehearsals, that actually, every time you try something, regardless of how frustrating it is, you do actually learn something meaningful from it. And that we should try and make ourselves, since, since this is coming, it's something that we don't necessarily want to come, but it is coming, we should use every resource that we have in order to try and prepare the district, the students, the teachers for it. So, I guess I'm inclined to be in favor of allowing the field testing to go forward, but I do feel extremely ambivalent about it. And unfortunately, it's, I think, ultimately unknowable whether or not we're doing the right thing or the wrong thing with it.
If I could just maybe say a couple of words here, I, I agree with your conclusion, but the example you gave was a car, well, when we build the car, first we built the prototype, and then we test the hell out of that. Before we built the car, which we pulled on, put on the road, so, your arguments, actually, or examples speaks on, basically to, yeah, we don't, we don't have the perfect product yet, but we will never have it unless we try it. And it cannot be just tried on a piece of paper, as an abstract concept, it has to be put into the field and see what are the glitches and-
And look at all the data you would get back from that.
The unfortunate thing is the time.
Let us assume that they, they give us data.
They're not, though.
Let us assume they give us data.
They just said they're not.
No. Let us assume that they give us data.
Nope, not going to assume, it's something they said they're not going to do.
What are you going to do with this data? What are you going to do with this data?
We're not going to do anything with it, because they just said we're not getting any.
It would inform instruction. I would tell you, Jan, if you got the data-
You can tell your scenario, if we were to get the data back.
Well, then I'd be in favor of it.
Then obviously, you could make more informed decisions.
Exactly.
And it would be in real time, hopefully.
Are you sure we won't make informed decisions?
No, I'm just, no.
The particular question, this particular standard of division missed the goal, and what are you going to do it, based on what? New York, Pennsylvania, and all these states, all combined with Tiverton? This is statistical, these are statistical trials, this is not how many children in real numbers answer this question at the level of three versus four versus five. That's not an objective of, of adjusting and tuning up this instrument.
I would, I would like to add, if, if this testing, this field testing happened independent of our school day, then I could see the justification for it. The problem is, we have a limited number of instructional hours, and they are very precious, and people who do not teach in schools, in public schools, often do not understand how very precious your instructional hours are, and how you see them taken away for various events and activities, some of them standardized testing, some of them even- very precious your instructional hours are and how you see them taken away for various events and activities, some of them standardized testing, some of them even activities like assemblies that you can say, yes, they have value. But at the end of the quarter, when you've lost five days of instructional time, you're struggling to cover your curriculum. And so it really is benefits and losses. It's a real loss of instructional time for limited or no benefits to our students. I understand that Pearson needs to field test their product. I know they field test MTEL tests, which are educator tests for Massachusetts. And when they field test them, they pay people $100 for their time because it's a profit. You know, they're making a product, and so, and they need to improve it. And so they'll pay you to help improve their product. With our students, even if you say, okay, we wouldn't pay students, but we're robbing them. We're robbing them of instructional time, and that time is priceless.
I feel the same way Dr. Locken does. I understand how everybody feels. When have you ever gone for a test? What if you went to the doctors for batteries of tests, and then you went back to the office and he sat there and said, I'm not going to tell you. I'm not going to tell you what happened. It's ridiculous. I can't believe how ridiculous it is. And I really think we need practice, and I agree with Yanni and Dr. Locken, but I also hear the teachers sitting here telling us and hearing Mr. Merrick was reading on some things and Diane Sander, and I just, I'm so conflicted because I don't want to fall behind in 2015. I think that puts us in another ridiculous situation. We had someone sit here saying, and I have to mention, I'm sorry, the kneecap, because he said, kids weren't prepared for it. They didn't take the courses yet. And we've been telling kids they can't graduate on that account? How absurd is that? The whole thing is crazy. So I have to say, I mean, I totally agree with everybody here.
Can I just add, maybe it's not appropriate, but because it's not time sensitive in the sense of if we, the committee waited till the 11th to give it some thought because it sounds, people are ambivalent. Would more time help the committee come to an answer? Because I want to make myself clear, and I don't think I was. I agree completely with what Devon Carroll is saying about the loss of instructional time. I think that's something that's important that you can't get back. On the other hand, I think we need to expose our kids, and I don't like it any more than anybody else does. I don't like this idea of saying a test score measures how good a, how valuable a child is or how effective they're going to be as adults, or are they going to contribute. I disagree with that whole idea. But the reality is, we do have this era we're living in where this testing is here and it's coming. And I was honest, I don't know, it's a close call. You know, my experience is if you try something twice, maybe you're better at it than if you just try it once. And I just think it's something that maybe the committee might want to think about because if you wait till the 11th, on the 12th, you tell RIDE, if the committee chooses, we're not going to participate, you don't participate. There's no harm no foul, as far as I can see. And it gives everybody a chance to kind of decompress from everything and digest what was said, because I think there are a lot of good valuable points made by everybody tonight. And it's, and it really is an ambivalent issue. I really wish we could have that data from the test. I really wish we could have it in real time, but as we heard, we don't. I mean, so it's not an easy, it's not an easy...
If we participate, when would we be scheduled for them? I found a window of March 4th to April 11th.
That's correct.
Principals would decide any time within that window.
So we have some time to wait.
Yes, you have the window. It's up to the principals, so. RIDE has left it up to us.
And you're right, that's probably, I do want to...
Just think about it.
I want to think about it some more.
If you have time to make a big decision like this, take it.
And maybe to think about for next time as a compromise, if we decide to go forward, just make sure that we communicate with our parents that they don't have to.
Right.
Although here...
Because that's how it evolved, right? Deb, it originally?
Yeah. No, that was exactly how it was because it was originally just...
Maybe we could get to that, to a middle ground. Offer it and...
Offer it and say, but make sure we communicate that you have the right to opt out these in volunteer...
I just would like to add, though, that even if you have 10 students out of your 25 opt out, which would be a large number, those students will still suffer the loss of instructional time because instruction will not be taking place while the other 15 students are participating. So you can tell them they can sit and read a book, but they will still lose the instructional time. It does not change the fact that we're robbing the students of valuable instructional time.
But it was sort of a... So we'll come back to that.
I think, thank you, Mr. Merrick.
Entirely up to the...
Okay, anybody else? Is everybody done? Kristen?
No, I was just wondering if...
Would you come up to the microphone? Because when people watch this on TV, they can't hear you.
Just halfway. Okay, you're good.
I just have a question.
You're good.
If you don't know me, I'm Kristen Destroms. I'm a sixth grade math teacher, is also the math coordinator. I know certain teachers were randomly picked to administer this test. Are the teachers giving, are 25 students being tested? Because I have two classes being tested.
Yes.
Am I the only one in the district with two?
They, we, they put it into, and I'll turn it to Diane and Steve and everybody. They put it into, they put it into a program, and they kicked out, they wouldn't let us pick.
So I was the unlucky person who ended up with two classes.
You won twice.
Right.
You didn't lose, you won twice.
Bingo.
I won twice. I don't think so. Well, my kids were tested early in September, and then they were chosen for a federal survey. And now I have...
Are you losing a lot of instructional time?
An awful lot. Plus four snow days and kneecap testing.
Can we change that?
That's something we'd have to ask RIDE because...
I bet they would let us.
I told it was, I was told it was randomly...
It was.
Oh, no, that if she loses, change her two classes?
We can change that. It just needs to remain at the same grade.
Yeah. I bet we can change that.
Okay.
Well, I'm just, I think it would be better if the other sixth grade math teacher experienced the test also.
Yeah. Aren't you nice?
Well, because I gave it last year. I did the assessments last year by computer, and I know the nightmare that was.
Just thinking of my...
And you'd like to share that.
So I think Christine should kind of suffer along with me.
You going to tell her tomorrow? Do you volunteer?
I will. She'll do it. I think she'd like to.
Thank you for letting me.
Because she hasn't experienced that.
That would be good.
She'll probably...
This is untaken.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
So we'll come back.
We'll come back. That's good. Thank you. Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Now we're on to teacher tenure.
Yeah, I'm just recommending, two people have achieved tenure. You only have two years of evaluations because under the new system, we can't complete the third year until June because of the growth goals and the student learning objectives. But the principals have evaluated them, you know, this year as well, and these folks have more than exceeded what we expect from our teachers, so.
I'll make a motion to...
The two teachers are Tara Messenger and Edward St. Michelle.
So I'll make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation for teacher tenure.
And each one seemed to have like 21 pages of, you know, it was very...
The second document is what the new evaluation instrument creates for every teacher.
But it's very comprehensive.
For every teacher.
So everybody knows in the community, it's not just a checkoff.
It's a very, and we need those back at the end of the meeting.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, we just need those back at the end.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Any questions now? Good. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Tara and Edward. Reports and announcements, we're currently working with Amy and Chris on finding a rescheduled date for our parent-teacher conference that we lost due to the most recent snowstorm. March 3rd is the kneecap retest three for high school seniors, for our 15 seniors. And I believe I've got the, it's March 25th, I believe. The Lions Club is recognizing three of our teachers along with a police officer and one other individual, and they recognize them as a group of whites on the 25th, so.
That's nice.
If anyone's interested in going.
Recognizing them.
Can you name the three teachers?
Excess.
Billy Phillips.
Bill Phillips is from the high school.
Supertrac.
Christine Costa and Supertrac.
Yeah. That's very nice.
So congratulations to those three teachers. And that's all I have under announcements.
Okay.